... present.
Have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the council minutes of the regular meeting of January 7th. Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claim bills in between fifty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-eight cents. Have a motion to approve.
Approve.
Any question, questions or comments? All in favor of bills in between to be paid, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Current claims of nineteen thousand nine forty-six seventy-seven, need a motion.
Approve.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? Having no comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Accounts payable for two thousand and twelve of eighteen hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents. Need a motion to approve.
Approve.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications from the public. Any communication from the public on Evans' plunge will be heard under old business tabled motion on Evans' plunge. Is there any communication from the public on it, any other subjects? Now that we can move on. Under our old business, we have a contract two thousand thirteen dash four Green.
Make a motion to approve this contract?
A motion and a second to approve Mr. Green's contract. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the tabled motion on Evans' plunge purchase under the admin promotion committee.
Make a motion, we vote on this tonight?
We have a motion to vote on it.
I would second that.
And I would, I would bring up a motion to table it again until future.
Motion on table.
The motion on the table, but I can motion to table it. I do so. All in favor? Or any questions or comments on table motion, I guess we don't have any of that, do we, Harley?
You need to act on the table motion before you go on with the other motion.
Are you guys' microphones on back here?
We can't hear a thing back here.
I'm loud next door. Of course, you're gonna ask them to be quiet that down a little.
Under the table motion for Evans' plunge, now we'll have a roll call vote to either accept the table or go on with the motion as made by Mr. Romi.
Roll call on the table to table the motion, Bart Lomi?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Drimes?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Romi?
No.
Wania?
Yes.
Motion carries to table.
The final TSP, TSP report was received this afternoon. It shows the facility can be operated for the next few years with a cost of four hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Can you hear in the back?
No.
Hold the mic right up to your mouth there.
The final TSP report was received this afternoon. It shows that the facility can be operated for the next three years with a cost of four hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Any long-term upgrades would need to be done with revenues collected over and above the annual operating costs and the debt service on an amount not to exceed one point nine million dollars. All of the council has said that the purchase should come to the vote of the public. I contacted the South Dakota Municipal League and they said that an initiated measure can be taken after this tabling of the motion again. So as a private citizen, I encourage an initiated measure to come forward. Either through one of the groups that has an interest in the plunge being purchased or I'll do it on my own as a private citizen.
Can't we do it?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
I'm a city resident, city resident, and I initiate a vote. I'd like to initiate a motion for a vote.
The report also said the building basically has outlasted its usefulness, so what does that tell you folks?
The town is too, and it's vacant.
You have a comment, ma'am?
I do. I don't understand that report because I was here when the, the report was given on all of the property, looking at it and what to do to update it, and that's not what I heard.
What's with the report?
Well, that report you might have had, but I am not knowledgeable to that report.
And I invite anyone to come down to City Hall and review the finalized report. I received the report Friday, now I'm being told that's not the final report. Now I received another report today, this is supposedly the final report, and it's like a shell game, it never ends.
I don't understand.
According to the other report, it's still, it's set in there, just exactly what I said.
I'm sorry, I'm.
They changed the report three times since that guy was here that night.
And the same.
The engineers for him, yes. They changed it three times since that night. Every time the city calls them, they change it.
What's the most current report? Is it, is it what he just stated, the most current one, does it state in there?
I haven't got a chance to read it, I just got it tonight.
Is that the one that says that it's stated, it's outlined its purpose or whatever?
The one Friday did.
I don't know what the one today says.
But the one on Friday did say that.
Let me read the cover letter that goes with the TSP report. And it's directed to Harley Lux, the city administrator, with reference to the Evans' plunge reports. Attached is the final report summarizing our initial findings about the Evans' plunge facility. As possibly a government-owned public facility, the bottom line is that the facility is in the next few years will require modernization to meet current building codes, the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, and some physical deficiencies such as roof repairs and mechanical adjustments. The budget cost for the initial startup and approximately five-year investment in the facility will be in the four hundred and fifty to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar range to continue operating at its current status. This effort could occur in two stages and breaks down as follows. Initial reopening, one hundred thousand to one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Are needed minor repairs to the facility such as roofing repairs, mechanical repairs, et cetera, and some of the required building code and ADA improvements. With the first year or so additional code and ADA changes will be required, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand plus some operational improvements and continued building repairs of a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. With this, these adjustments, the facility should be in sufficient shape to continue operation for at least five years ahead. In the long run, physically the building can be operated for many more years with an increasing sufficient significant investment in maintenance and a need for to modernize or replace components of the facility's infrastructure. This will include repairs to the building shell, windows, roof, insulation, et cetera, and interiors. Also, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems will need to be overall modernized as well to obtain another twenty to thirty years use. There will possibly be some substantial ADA and building code considerations remaining to be further defined and addressed as well. Prior to completing any significant reinvestment in the facility for the long term, it would be an opportune time to reevaluate operations with respect to the market and make changes to the facility as required to improve the program facilities and offerings. If this effort was provided in the first year of operations, this would ensure that any significant improvements could be accomplished in a way that would support the long-term vision for the city, for the facility in a phased manner. For this report, TSP has only provided a broad-brush review of the facility concentrating on the big-picture issues to assist the city in their decision to possibly purchase the facility for long-term, short-term, and long-term use. As the facility was cowed together over the years and there are no drawings or public records of permits, no warranties to review, no city inspection reports or other supporting documents, TSP has had little information to start with in preparing this initial assessment. As such, it is important to note that our initial scope and budgetary figures are only in the order of magnitude assumptions made for use in the overall planning. And in order to verify these initial assumptions as soon as possible, we strongly recommend the following. Short-term and mid-range operational goals for the facility be further identified and a capital improvement scope of work and budget be established. Detailed scale building drawings are developed. A focus effort be undertaken to review with city officials and alternate and final strategies with cost for identifying and addressing immediate and long-term code and ADA deficiencies as well as operational changes for the facility. Detailed inspections be initiated to further identify and quantify essential repairs required to the facility for the immediate and long-term and associated budgeting. Sincerely, Tim Roach, AIA Project Architect, TSP. I'm gonna transfer to the public hearing that we have, a public hearing for a use permit on review.
This is the continuation from the last meeting, they were waiting for some letters that were sent out, certified for return, so we've got the, I'm going to present to answer any questions.
I had my hand up. After reading that, what's the advantage of the city buying Evans' plunge?
Can we get back to you, we have to do this.
We have to do this hearing first.
This is scheduled.
I don't, I just summarized what you had said the last time.
Did you get the certification and stuff?
Yes, the certified letters have all been sent out, and as far as I know, they've all been received.
I make a motion to accept this?
The only comment that was mentioned was some debris that might be on the site that needed cleaned up, and I hope that happened.
My husband talked to somebody today, a neighbor who would ask us to, they have a pickup of some furniture from a friend of ours, it's not our specialty, so I will have that going here over the week.
That was the only concern that came through City Hall, so.
So we have a motion on the table to accept the use permit on review. Did I hear a second? We have a second? So we can vote on this now, any comments or current questions concerning it? All in favor on the council to accept it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The measure, the measure now goes to, the public hearing is over and it's initiated.
Yep, you can visit with Scott on whatever other thing you need to finalize. Good luck with it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now I've read that letter that, that came from Tim Roach at TSP, and I would say that one of the reasons that I motioned this to be tabled again was concerned of the plunge is so that an initiated measure can go out to have petitions circulated, to have a voice of the public come in on this. Once those petitions come back, I think we need a hundred and twenty-six to a hundred and thirty-five signatures. They have to be city residents and voting residents from the two thousand and twelve election. When those are verified, we will set a, a special election. And my understanding is that election is gonna cost about twelve to thirteen hundred dollars, not the thirty-five hundred as expected. So it is gonna come to a vote of the people. And I would believe that members of the council are interested in signing that petition also, I am one.
It also could have came with a vote on the first motion, too. No one wants to see the plunge failed, do they?
We're taking it to a vote of the people, that's what we want.
That's what? That's, that's what.
That's where we're going with it.
No, I think we need to answer his question, or he had a question, I guess.
You know, you just read what it, you know, all the downfalls of buying Evans' plunge. What's the advantages of the city to do that?
Sure. Okay, do you mind?
State your name and.
Gerald Harry, property owner in Hot Springs, very well invested in, I don't live in Hot Springs, but I pay a hell of a lot of property taxes here.
I think all of us are, we, we understand where you're at, okay? I hear what you're saying. Is there anything I go ahead?
Go ahead and read that thing that you have, but get your face close to the mic so everybody can hear you.
Okay, purchasing the Evans' plunge, I believe that it is our responsibility as council members to evaluate and provide the best possible information to our community to continue to help it grow on thrive. That's number one. Purchasing the Evans' plunge as a separate entity, but as a part of our community, our city municipality, would create the advantage to our city by maintaining a year-round health facility with natural hot water springs or pool. The revenue, large or small, will keep the dollars circulating in our city and it would keep a historic site open for our public use at reasonable cost. If our city can help businesses stay open through the winter season by keeping the Evans' plunge open the other six months, I believe it will help our community stay alive. We need the plunge open for our swim team, our elderly people with arthritis, those that have had joint replacements in other families to have an affordable place for healthy family activities. The city has the opportunity to apply for grants to expand and improve through parks and recreations. Other entities do not. We have several active groups in our community that have come together to help the city to manage the activities. Monday, our president stated seven times in his inaugural address that we must work together. I see this happening here in Hot Springs. Another important fact that we must not forget is the water rights for the plunge. Hot Springs is named after those warm surface springs that bubble up through the plunge, and we do not have the water rights. Our pump house rests on Evans' plunge property. We did obtain an easement for that building, but I ask you, who is more fitting to have those water rights than the city of Hot Springs? Please support our decision to prevent the loss of our natural resources, the waters, and our historical site. Warren Buffett stated, "Look at what we have, where we were, and where we have come." Hot Springs, believe in yourselves and our community, don't give in to fear. We tabled the motion to vote on the purchase of the plunge on December twenty-seventh at the council meeting, and until we can look at the final report from the TSP engineers, which we got tonight, we have received this paid for by another group that is willing to help, by two other groups that are willing to help manage and with this facility. Our initial cost in startup and five-year investment for the facility will cost from four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and eighty-five thousand range above the purchase price. But this couldn't be accomplished in a two-year phase. And Carl just read both of those. The meeting owners right now are preparing to open it by April first. And the initial reopening with minor repairs, approximately a hundred to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This cost may be reflected in our purchase price. Within two years, an additional code updates and ADA changes, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand may be required plus building repairs, hundred, one hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Carl just read all those things to you now. Yes, we have expenses that we will incur, we will have to improve. I don't think it's impossible, and even if we make one dollar to help keep it open through the winter, I think the revenue generated in this town through dollars turning over and over is probably a bigger benefit than anything that we can say as far as the.
I'm gonna take another timeout, I have another hearing that I have at seven twenty-five. We have a public hearing on a malt beverage license transfer from Bumpers Pub and Grub to John A. Conrad. The link of the description is lots fifteen and sixteen, block one, original town. And I presume that all of the paperwork is in on this and.
All of the affidavits of transfer for inventory and a proper application is going to be.
So I would entertain a motion to approve this malt beverage license transfer.
Sir, that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing no comments. We can vote, by roll call, vote please.
Burris?
Yes.
Drimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Wania?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bart Lomi?
Yes.
unanimous, Mr. Eric.
Thank you. Now we'll continue on with your question, sir.
You're gonna tell me that the city can run a business better and more efficient than a private enterprise? That's why we're coming in, you're talking about all this revenue. They produce the dollars also.
They, they definitely do. We're asking, we have no control over whether it stays open in the winter or not. If you're a private entity, you can vote for tomorrow. What our objective is to try and keep it open during the winter months, everyone leaves town and there's a few left and the stores go in. To me, that's definitely not a good thing.
Stores are empty.
Well. What I'm trying to say is it is hard on the business. If you own a business in town and you, people go south because it's warmer or whatever. We have a lot of people that have, talk to me about leaving because they want to have the opportunity to go in because of arthritis or whatever, to use the plunge. The swim team came and talked to us also. The swim team goes to Rapid, well, there, we lose Rapid in there, if they go to Rapid, they wanna eat out, whatever. And it's a, it's a problem for them to go. If we can offer it here, I think that's what we as a city should be able to do.
Okay, now.
And, go ahead.
When we get down, we offer that, okay, whoever, how are the people vote? Now how are we gonna pay for it?
We have found through looking at the books that we presented that as best as we could. We cannot expose everything because we are bound by a contract, we cannot give you all of the information. We have looked at the books, yes, and it can be profitable. The management of it has to be something that is done very specific. And we have two groups that have come together, which is what I was talking about, they will help manage too. But the city as an entity has to be still the ones that are in charge of the finances. We pay for it, we have to be still responsible.
So the management would be under city control?
Board that would have a city in the board.
That has to be a vote from the council.
And there are different options and ways of doing that. That's what we are trying to discuss and figure out. We have people that are interested in helping us do this. I'll have to be honest with you, when I first started looking at this, my biggest concern was the management of it and how we as a city could manage it without conflict of interest with whatever went on. Too much micromanagement, whatever. I do believe that we have the ability through some of our options now by talking to these groups, by having the city involved in the board and different options. And yes, we'll have to discuss about the different ways to do it. We do have ordinances and things that we have to abide by, so it still has to go to the city.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is the city doesn't have a good track record on.
And I, I agree with you on that, and that's why I said that. I will not, I will not accept anything that is not going to work because it has to have some independent people that will make decisions and make it for the best of the whole community.
And then are those people paid out of?
That would have to be a decision on the board and how it's set up.
What we've looked at, what we've looked at, Mr. Eric, is the fact that we, we put out notification that we looked at the books and records, and what we released was a schedule of what the expenses would be, up to six hundred and fifty thousand. We overestimated expenses, and then we went through and looked at the revenues, and we came out with eight hundred and thirty thousand in revenues, and we, that was a low expectation on revenue. So it's going to be, now that this.
Debt reduction in that, out of that revenue, and plus improvements, plus operating expense.
That's in there.
Yes, and we do have the advantage, actually, quite a.
Who said it's not?
Former council person.
What are you talking about that's not in there? The debt reduction is at a hundred and, we, we figured two hundred and, two million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. two hundred and twenty-five thousand over twenty years at three percent interest, the payment would be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We are now looking at reducing that to a million nine, and having that money available at three percent brings the payment down to a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
What if ultimately it ends up costing five or six million dollars? Is that, what's that gonna do to your theory?
I hope you're not on the board when it does that.
I'm just, I'm just being realistic.
My name is Robert Paul. I am a citizen of Hot Springs. I am a registered voter, and I am a taxpayer. Councilperson Holmes, I think your goals are extremely laudable for what you would like to do. The simple fact of the matter is, the groups that would like to use the plunge during the winter have not been able to produce enough revenue to keep it open the last few years. The owners have had to close it because they could not generate enough revenue to continue the operations over the winter, nor were they able to produce enough revenues over the months that they were open to carry them through the winter. I'd like to know, you know, it's easy to make projections, but, I mean, let's face it, folks, we're not a plush community. Times are tough, economic times are tough. If we lose the VA, you're talking about a drastic reduction in property tax rates, plus you're talking about a drastic reduction in sales tax revenues. How are you gonna make that up? You can project all you want, but if you don't have the money, you don't have the money. As a taxpayer, as it is right now, I am spending one paycheck each month as property taxes. I can't go anymore, folks. I'm up against the wall.
I own property in Hot Springs. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Evidently, we don't.
I, and I do know that we have prevented our taxes from being raised. We purposely done that.
If your taxes weren't increased, it was the county that did it for the last two years.
Carl, 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 maybe, but the city had a tax increase in there too.
No.
I can bring, I can bring the statement, I can show you. I'm paying more to the city this year than I did last year. That's an increase to me.
The county increased your taxes, not the city. We did not take the opportunity...
The city portion of taxes is higher this year than it was last year, Carl.
Wait, give me an opportunity to respond to you, Mr. Paul. We did not increase the tax base that we could have at three percent for the last two years.
Okay, very well and good, but...
That was the county that did it.
But, that's not addressing my concern.
Your concern is the people not being...
At this point, that's not addressing my concern, because if we lose the VA, folks, property values are gonna drop, tax revenues are gonna drop, sales tax revenues are gonna drop. How can you pay for something when you have less money coming in?
That's why we need the plunge to bring that money in.
The plunge is not bringing people in, because it's closed. Even when they're open during the winter, they're losing money.
Just to kind of piggyback on what Robert was talking about here.
You don't live in town here.
In the letter, pardon?
You don't live in town.
He spends money in town.
That's okay, I live in the county. Some of your staunchest proponents don't even live in the county. Don't you dare.
Hey, hey, say what you want.
Hey, hey, you're moving out to the county too, from what I hear. Anyways, let me just say this, don't you tell me I don't have the right to speak. Who the heck are you?
Go ahead.
Address the council, don't address the rest of the... He addressed me, and I was addressing him back. To piggyback on what Robert was saying, the letter that the owners of the plunge sent out to their members when they announced they were closing it, said, "We can no longer afford to subsidize this in the winter months. We've been subsidizing it for nine years. Where's the profit in the winter?" That's all I'm asking. And if that offends you, I'm really sorry. Well, what they've done for the last thirty-five years, except for the last two, let's, let's take it back to thirty-four years. They started closing in 2010, early, and before that, they were open year-round. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, you are.
Okay? So it's, it's not a matter of subsidizing or not having the money there to carry it over. I had a business too. I had short-term too.
They used a way that they could not long, any longer reach in their pockets to keep it open.
No, they, they didn't reach in their pockets, they just used up the profits that they made to keep it going. That's how I run my business too. I've been a member of that place off and on for years, and in the wintertime, I really loved going there. You know why? Because I could go in on any given day, afternoon or early evening, and maybe see three other members there. The place was not heavily used. Well, in fact, the matter is, is that the initiative is gonna go out.
That's a fair one.
And it'll be, it'll be up to the citizens of Hot Springs to make the decision of whether we're, we're going to go forward with this, or are we just gonna lackadaisically go on with our lives and not do nothing?
Carl, and that's a very fair statement. That's putting, that's putting the issue right squarely where it belongs.
Exactly, and that's why I did it that way. Most of the council said before that we don't wanna vote on this until we hear from the public. Well, now we're gonna hear from the public.
What information's gonna be provided to the public for them to make a decision for themselves? Because as, as Georgia stated, there's information that we're not privy to, so it makes it very difficult to make an educated decision.
There's information that only two people in the council see.
That's being privy to.
None of us has seen the books, only two people seen the books. Would you buy a business without looking at the books? I wouldn't either.
Why haven't you seen the books?
Well, I am one of those people that has seen the books.
And I have to.
And I'm a graduate with an accounting degree and a federal auditor.
Well, I'm an economist and...
Well, I understand where you're at. You're from Pringle.
Do you want me to get a lobotomy and get like you?
Hey, 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 hey! That's, that's enough. Let's hold it down, let's stay respectful here. I can understand the point of view of having just limited number of people seeing the books under these circumstances. If it is gonna come to a vote of the people, these figures are gonna have to be made public.
Of the city of Hot Springs. It ain't gonna be out in the county, it's gonna be the city of Hot Springs.
What would you recommend yourself as a world study?
I wanna initiate measure.
Well, I mean, what would you...
After looking at the books and records...
What would you recommend to the citizens of Hot Springs?
Eldon, I don't think that's a fair question at this point in time.
That's a question. All right, I'll tell you what a fair...
No, it isn't. Nobody has been, nobody has been privy.
I came to this town thirty-five years ago, and it's been a very successful, good town, home of business. However, with the VA hanging and now the plunge hanging, God, I wish that was sold out a few years ago. But I'm willing to stick it out if the people in this town are willing to stick it out. And I'm just a little afraid the people ain't gonna vote to buy this thing. But the people are the power, and I, I respect the power of the people. But I'm telling you as a businessman, I'm scared to death, and I just hope we can give the right facts. That's why I asked you what you would, your opinion would be, 'cause you've studied this thing, and you see the profit in the expenses, and I just, you know, would like to...
You know, that was one of the reasons why we brought out the schedule that we had. Was it three meetings ago? Where we showed by over, overestimating expenses and underestimating revenue where we could be at this.
But Carl, if you have to completely replace the bill and you're not taking that into account...
We're not, we're not gonna be doing that for twenty or thirty years. What are you talking about?
Don't you think it would be a good thing to have a committee study this thing for recommending to the public? I mean...
Isn't, isn't that what the council is, is elected to do?
Well, yeah.
Okay, it is, but it's hard to do when only two of the council members have seen the figures.
That's right.
Then you have to rely on, Harley Lux has seen him, he's the city administrator. I'm an accountant and auditor. I've seen him. Georgia has looked at him. She sees that the profit is there. The other ones...
I was offered a chance to see the books, and I turned it down because what good is it gonna do for me to see those books when I can't tell anybody what I saw in those books?
He has a good...
I made my recommendation.
He has a good point, because if you're a business owner and you have your books out for everybody to see, you should have some option of saying, "I don't want everybody to see those." And that's what we signed our agreement for. We have to respond, we have to be responsible to the business owners that own it right now and be fair to them too. I mean, it is a business.
Lyle, one of these owner, one of these people here rightly said, when they asked members of the city council, or asked Carl, "What would you do?", that's why I'm in hopes, I like the idea that we've got time, and people like yourself, there's a lot of people out there that absolutely trust you, and because the public cannot see these books, they want you, that's why they elected you, to look at those books, and then you can look at them, you can make a decision and tell the public, "Based on what I see in the books, I don't recommend we do it," or "Based on what I see in the books, we should do it," or "Based on what I see, it's very close, and here's some of the positives and negatives," and then the public can make up their mind from there.
The only reason I voted to table this thing tonight, if it would come to a vote, I would've voted no, don't buy the plunge. The only reason I tabled this tonight was so that you people, the public, could make a decision. I can't tell you what's in those books. I can, I can tell you that the projections that they came out with a month ago are based on those books. That's the best I could tell you. That's the best I could ever offer anybody in this room, or in this town.
Did the projections take into account the drastic loss of revenue the town and the people in the town are gonna have if the VA leaves?
No.
Nobody knows that.
Nobody knows what that's worth.
If the economy were...
So, so basically, our projections are just a wag, right? They're just a wild-ass guess, 'cause we don't know.
No, they're not a wild-ass guess.
Carl, how can you say there's not? If we're not taking into account the loss of revenue.
You wanted to know my opinion, and I'm gonna give it to you right now. It is my opinion that the city go forward and buy the plunge. And look at the books and records.
It's not also, I agree.
Look at the books and records that show that the profit is there, and we know what the expenses are gonna be.
We can't do it. We really can't.
You think you can run a business on thirty-five thousand a year, Georgia?
The public is gonna need something to go on, obviously.
How about any town in the United States that has a Hot Springs benefits from it? Show me one that doesn't. You guys have to consider what we have here and what we could be losing. I have five properties here. I could be losing five properties, but I'm willing to try. You know, show me one, Mr. Grimes. One town that has Hot Springs that has not benefited.
Vermont, Wyoming. They're doing fantastic.
They're doing fantastic.
No, they're not. They're doing fantastic. Oh, man, I've been there just a month and a half ago. Oh, so you've seen the financial records, have you? Well, it's, it's only a... That was seventeen hundred. We saw the financial records of Steamboat Springs, and they're doing great.
They also have a ski slope.
What other industries do they have?
Ranch.
God.
Those are just owned in Northern Maine.
But those have ski slopes.
Over towns.
When we're possibly, maybe you won't play the rent respect or the...
About Steamboat, I should say.
...the point of things if you want to...
Craig, how come you don't get to look at the books? I think going to executive session and have all our council people... Oh, I was told, Harley Lux, the reason Wes and I... Oh, by the way, where does he live? Let me finish. The reason Wes and I can't look at the books is 'cause Carl Oblidner don't like us. That's bad. They're trying to sell us something.
Yes, ma'am.
First and foremost, I am a property owner. I do not live in the town of Hot Springs, but I am a property owner.
Bottom line is, I'll get there.
Bottom line is, what's it gonna do to my property taxes? Don't tell me it isn't gonna cost me a dime. It will. It always does.
It already has.
It already has.
It is now.
Now, I am not bragging. I own seventeen properties in this town. They're rentals. When my expenses go up, the cost of doing business goes up, what happens to rent? My rent I charge my renters is going to go up. You go to a hardware store or a grocery store, when their cost of business goes up, their products go up. Rents in this town will go up. When property taxes go up, it is a given. Second of all, I am from Pringle, and I am proud of it, and I take insult at what you said.
Ed, Paul.
Thank you.
Ed?
Paul.
We need you to talk up now, Ed. You gotta talk up.
Sorry, I don't talk very loud. There's a couple of things that, that are bothering me about this line, and I, I agree with you. The people of this town need to vote on this, because if your projections are wrong, the people that pay the taxes are gonna foot the bill. That's the bottom line here. The other thing is that you're talking three to five years on a twenty-year loan. What you're doing is most of the people here in this room aren't gonna be alive then. So what you're doing is the same thing the federal government is doing.
Don't insult me in that.
So, so what we're doing is exactly the same thing the federal government is doing by going out on a limb. We're mortgaging the future of every child in this room that wants to stay in this town. So we need to think long and hard about that. I don't disagree with Harley's numbers. He was kind enough to go over them with me, and if he's right, it's a good deal. If anything at all goes wrong, if the costs go up, if the tourists don't come, we're done, and we're gonna have to pay for it. And that's what you need to think about, is are you willing to give that little girl the bill for the plunge? Okay? Think about that long and hard, because that's exactly what you're doing. Okay? Most of us in this room are not gonna be affected by this, because we're gonna be long gone before it's a problem. But fifteen years down the line, if that line falls down and that little girl's gotta pay for it, it's gonna be a big deal there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I still want five here. You've got some more questions here, go, as soon as you get there.
Mr. Lux?
I just have a procedural question, just to clarify. When you made your motion to table, you, you said that it was so that this could be initiated and we could all vote on it, which I think is, is, is a good course here. But I'm not clear, was, was the motion to table, to put it on the table until after the initiated action comes up?
After the election.
Or is this to come back again at the table at the next council meeting? I just want to be clear, is this tabled until a date after that, or...
They never said, so it's hard to say.
Well, that's my, that's my question, you know, because if it's to be tabled until after the initiated results come back, then it would seem perhaps another motion needs to be had to, to clarify that point, otherwise I presume this will come back pretty much every meeting.
I want, I wanna...
Which is fine, but I, I just, I'm not clear what, what it is that we're doing.
I wanna clear things up there, but in here, if the city council would've voted no, it has still came to the vote of the people, either way. So, Har, Har, Carl doing this was just a grandstand, in my opinion. Either way, it had come to the vote of the people, so...
I don't believe it's Carl's grandstand.
Craig, Craig, had, had the council voted yes, we would have, we would have twenty days to initiate petitions. So either way, it would've, it would've come to an initiated petition, so, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. I think the way that it's being handled right now is probably the best way that it could go, and I think right now, let it go, let people initiate petition on it, let's bring it to a vote. There is nothing, there is nothing further that can be hashed out at this point in time.
That's correct.
I'd like to say that I, I'm thankful to Carl and Georgia for all the research that you did and for all the projections you put forward. There've been comments about the money spent by the city to pay for all this research, but how would anybody in this room, or anybody in this community, know anything if it wasn't for your hard work?
So the problem is, this council voted a year ago, no. So the problem is, you've had a lot of city officials working on this, spending tax dollars when we voted no. That's what bothers me.
If I, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it for a different amount?
It was for a different amount. Let me elaborate on what he said.
We voted no, not to buy it.
No, you didn't.
It came up, it was never voted upon.
We voted, no.
You're right. Yeah, it was never voted upon.
And one of the reasons why it never did come to a vote is because they wouldn't let us look at the books and records.
So then we voted to stop working on it, we voted something.
The first time that we went in there and I sat around the table with the owners of the plunge and they said, "You can't look at the books and records, but we want two point two five million dollars for the business." I said, "Thank you," and got up and walked out.
I'd like to clarify too, when I said earlier if the vote would have came tonight, I would have said no. That's because I don't believe the eight people sitting at this table should decide this for the four thousand or so in the city. I think the city should decide this for the bill.
Now, will that, will they allow you then, after it comes from a referendum on, on the people, to be able to open up the books, to do, negotiate or whatever now, instead of keeping it just to certain members?
You mean after the citizens' vote?
After the citizens' vote?
I don't know.
I mean, if it happens to go with yes, then...
I don't know that either.
All our council members have to have...
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that point with those remaining owners of the business.
Okay.
Do we even know that the present owners of the business are gonna keep this offer on the table if it comes to a vote?
We have a signed purchase agreement.
We have a signed purchase agreement that's holding up until May one.
And that purchase agreement is going to hold in the event of a, of a...
The city?
No, not the city.
Private entity.
But private entity isn't buying it, is it, Gary?
Private entity or a signed...
Is a private entity buying the plunge? I'm under the impression that the city did.
Not me, I didn't put up the fifty grand.
I can buy it if I want it according to the purchase agreement, or I can assign it to someone.
I'll tell you what, if, if you were to buy it, it would leave a lot of...
What twelve years did you look at?
From two thousand one to two thousand and, two thousand to two thousand eleven.
Yeah, but we did get twelve off.
And we haven't had an opportunity to review some of the records for two thousand and twelve. Paul Nables?
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Joe Lux, it would be nice to know specifically the tabling question because the way he's putting it forward is since it's tabled, if no petition comes forward next week, you could go ahead and vote on it next week and everybody has to keep showing up. And so it would be nice if you defined that procedurally. Uh, the only thing I'd ask Carl is that you get with Neil and specify specifically what the initiative petition is and as much detail as possible because if it's fuzzy, then we're back to the public not knowing what they're voting for, how many million are gonna be spent, so on. And so if you can get with Neil and define whatever this petition's gonna be, I think that would just make it easier for everybody all around.
Well, I think it's gonna be Neil and the recreation initiative. Are you now...
Yes.
Have you people come together into one?
Yes, we're working under the Southern Hills Recreation Initiative, five oh one C three.
It is a five oh one C three, established.
But I'm just saying, the wording of the petition, I'm just saying...
I understand what you're talking about and I don't wanna see it go out there uh, to come back and go to the state and have the state say, "This is all wrong, throw it out." I don't want that to happen either.
Who would, who would institute the referendum, uh, it's not an issue, it's not a referendum.
It's not a referral, it's an initiative by the public.
They'd have to vote on it before you can refer it.
Right.
And they're not.
Right.
How soon can you have an initiative voted on?
Uh, well, it, it takes, like I said, a hundred and twenty-six to a hundred and thirty-five. I would like to see about two hundred signatures on a petition. And as soon as those petitions are brought back to the city and they're verified as residents of the city and voters in the two thousand twelve election and throw out those that aren't and still have a hundred and twenty-six people, then we can set an election after that. I would presume that we're gonna get this done by fifteenth of February. Am I right, Harley? Somewhere in that vicinity?
The board has to act on the petitions when, you know, after they're filed, so they can be filed at any time. I mean, if the petitions go out tomorrow and, and you have enough legitimate signatures or, you know, based on what Carl said, registered voters of the community, registered voters circulated the petitions, so, you know, a group, if you're living out of town, you can't circulate a petition because you have to be a registered voter in order to circulate the petition.
I don't think that's right, Harley.
No, no, that's wrong. Uh, I, I could carry a petition, I can't sign one.
You can circulate it, but you can't sign one.
Uh...
Yes.
There's some initiated petitions, I think, for a community and I'd have to double check with attorney.
On a referendum, I think that can happen.
I'll verify that.
We'll verify that with, with the USFLA legal here.
And we'll get an answer to Joe's question too, you know, as to what, what, what we are from the legal counsel, you know, in the morning.
And going back to the council...
Kim's got a question.
Can you guys tell me, so if the city purchases this, um, will the city have to be paying taxes into the city on this building? Or is that revenue loss?
That revenue loss.
So it's revenue loss.
No, I think what we're looking at is the possibility of doing like we do what, what we have with the high-rise in the Evans and out of the, the proceeds that are taken in at the plunge, pay in lieu of taxes back to the city, which would be, I think their taxes right now are somewhere in the vicinity of thirty-six thousand. Of that thirty-six thousand, twenty-five, twenty percent or twenty-five?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent comes back to the city. So we would look at paying in lieu of taxes at least that amount.
So it'd be a wash or would there still be a loss?
No, it would be a wash.
No, because you're still paying county taxes, so the city end up taking care of it. As far as the school and the county, they're still gonna have to make that up.
No, they're out.
Aren't they always increasing our taxes anyway?
But so with that, can I ask my question?
Yes.
So with that, with the taxes, are you saying it'd be a wash?
It's sounding like it was an even wash.
Right. Okay, so, so all the business owners, all the business owners that do pay taxes and that do support the community, how is the rest of the businesses in town going to benefit from it? I know you say, "Oh, they'll come in and they'll stay and they'll eat," or whatever. All the plans that you guys are talking about that they're gonna do or say, just from the hearsay and the big scare of the hills angels coming in to buy that. My que- my question is, you're claiming it's healing waters. Is it chlorinated?
Sometimes it is, it's not on a regular basis.
Chlorinated water, tell me, how's that healing? I mean, anybody can go jump in a hot pool.
As I said, if you've got over two hundred people in the pool, you have to have a certain amount of chlorination.
Correct. So, I was born here in Hot Springs, raised here, went to school here, I raise my kids here. I believe the plunge should be open, but for it to be a community thing...
You want a city pool?
Pardon?
Would you like to see us have a city pool?
I think the schools should step up and I think we've got enough grants up there to get a pool going up for the school swimming team.
Do they have seven and a half million that they can afford?
I don't know what it, I, I don't have an option on that.
Seven, seven and a half million, did you just say, Harley?
I said, you know, for a new, for a new facility, it would cost approximately seven and a half million.
That's right.
For any indoor pool. You just don't dig a hole and throw water in it and say it's a pool.
A million and a half, what they want, right?
A million six.
It's a bargain.
It's an, it's a negotiable figure, too.
Hey, I'll tell you what, if I was thirty years old, I would run down there tomorrow.
And that's the thing, why don't these private individuals that are trying to secure this stuff, why don't they go out just like every other blue collar business owner that would go out and start up and buy it?
Maybe you could ask them.
It's because the liability, they wanna secure it, and all power to them. But why make the city, why, why put the responsibility back on the city?
I, I think what our purpose is to benefit the city in different ways. I would prefer seeing children down there in the winter swimming rather than sitting in front of the TV all day. And if it's open on Fridays, I don't know, I had one teacher, well, it was a spouse, say, "What's wrong with the calling of a babysitter? It's better than chasing him around with a police car."
Mr. Reeder, so it's either the plunge or jail.
Could I?
I'm just saying there's options, you do have an option to entertain a little.
Can Mr. Reeder be recognized? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there's, there's four people that have seen the books on this thing and they think the city should purchase the thing. I think if the city doesn't, I think we're missing a golden opportunity. I think it's a chance to put money in the city coffers.
Why don't you buy it then? If it's such a good deal, why don't you buy it?
Get together with nineteen or twenty other people and pool your money. Buy it like the last one.
I, I, I think it's a chance to put some money... Would you let me speak, please?
Please do.
It's a chance to put some money in the city coffers and, and more than make up the taxes that you would leave.
We don't know that.
You got city streets you gotta have repaired.
We've got the, the books, the books that the four individuals presented...
You can't predict what the economy's gonna be like two years from now, you can't predict...
You close that plunge and we lose the VA and you see what Hot Springs is gonna look like. It's gonna be a ghost town.
I'll tell you what, if we lose the VA, the plunges are gonna keep us going.
That's why we need the plunge.
It's not gonna keep us going. Oh, come on, people, really? That's high in the sky.
You don't have any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Are you saying that you wanna see this for the community or for your own personal use? I think it would be a good, I think it would be a win-win situation for everybody. Win-win? Yeah? How many times we heard that? The big elk hunting preserve, that's a win-win up on the hill. Not many elk coming off that hill. Somebody in this... Let's keep it to the platform. I don't want, I, I don't wanna do county business. Thank you.
I can give one comment, if you don't mind.
I wanna hear it.
Make your comment.
The problem I have with this, and I agree that probably the plunge might be a good deal, I don't know. I haven't been here long enough. I am a taxpayer, I am a voter, and I was an employee of the city. The problem I have with this is, you gentlemen are sat here right now and you vote, or the people say, the people vote, it says, "We need to buy the plunge," and we go ahead and buy it. Five years down the road, it comes up, and instead of making eighty thousand or whatever it's supposed to make, it's losing twenty thousand a year. And the council then comes in with no call from the public and says, "We don't want it anymore," and shut it down. And then it comes up that I've got another ten dollar charge on my water bill to pay that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a hundred and fifty million off of wherever the hell it is.
Can I, can I ask you what you think of that?
And I'm voting that, I'm basing that on what happened to the merf, and the merf was a money-making thing. It was making eighty thousand, it was clearing eighty thousand. And the council voted just like that to close it, closed it, and now there's a nine dollar charge on my water.
I think, I think you're talking about apples and oranges.
We were forced to close the merf. No, you weren't.
Yes, we were.
The permit's still in fact, and the money...
We were forced to close the merf under a settlement agreement and a lawsuit.
It's a good old boy thing.
Mr. Adams?
I'm sorry, I guess I lost my...
Can I, can I ask you what you think of the water? About us having the water rights for the plunge?
Absolutely.
Did you elaborate on that?
There's no right, that just passed through. You don't have a, you cancel the order.
We are, we are gonna sell, but I'm just saying that we would have the option to have the, uh, to have the permit for the water use. I just feel it's important that we do.
And what advantage would that be, though?
There's a lot of different things that could be done. It doesn't have to be done the way it is right now, any entity could do differently.
I would like to recognize Mr. Miller.
Thank you. We do need a recreation center. And this would be a great recreation center for the community. For the girl, she's gonna enjoy swimming and she'll support her all her life with love. And that's what a few of us, we wanna give to this. The water is gonna draw the next industry here. Sixty, seventy thousand tourists, that's our industry here. And that seventy, sixty, seventy thousand brings in what we need. And this water will bring in the decision you can make from this water, you know, keep them here another day or so. We need this, we really do. It's, we need a start somewhere in this town. And this could be a start at the north end and work down through, I don't know.
You know, one of the, one of the issues that came up about two years ago was the fact that we were gonna put behind us all the wrong that had been done on prior administrations and move forward. This is moving forward.
No, this is starting over.
Yeah.
This is repeating the mistakes that they've...
Talking of this water rights deal is crap. Your water right now that we're drinking is all spring water, coming from Hot Brook, coming from the Evans plunge. It's spring water, those are not wells. The creek running through town is spring water, there's plenty of spring water here. And then you say, "Any industry that comes to town, you need that water," that's right. And how many times have we turned away industry here? How many times have we turned away profit like the sewer line from within K or selling water to Southern Hill, water here a couple of years ago? And they would say, "There was plenty of water to sell, it's just a matter of if you wanna walk through knee-deep or ankle-deep." You guys shoot everything down that makes money that we already have, then you wanna spend two million dollars on thin air. You own the water, the state owns the water when it's in the ground. Once it's on the surface, running down the creek, it belongs to the four engineers. And correct me if I'm wrong, Harley.
That is true.
That's exactly right.
But the state gives the water rights to the people that have the permits to do so, so...
But you can apply for a permit tomorrow if you want to the state for water, that's the law. Is it?
Is it not true that the...
What about the ton pass block way that the VA owns and they're pumping it to the VA and dumping it out that culvert? That's a pretty good flow, right there below the boiler, plant at the VA, flowing in the creek, that's all water they're not using. Coming before it gets to the Evans plunge. So don't play the spring water quality issue, that's, that's wrong.
No, that's why we're gonna put it to the vote of the people. Sir, back there.
I have researched with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources the water issue. The water depends on the age of the permit. The permit for the plunge is January first, eighteen ninety, it is superior to any permits that have been issued since then. It is not simply pass-through water. If you wanna copy of this, write to me, four oh eight North Seventeenth Street, Hot Springs, and I will give you word for word what the, the people, five or six people in DNR said to me about these rights. They are not simply pass-through rights, the rights depend on permits, the permits are superior by a certain age. This is one of the oldest permits in the state. If you want Hot Springs to be a town of fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand people, twenty-one hundred, you wanna buy that, the, the, the water that controls that now. This is for, this is what you get, give to the little girls in this room and to the children who haven't been born yet is the right to enough water in a community that only has sixteen inches of rain a year. If you wanna know the details and you wanna know the people appear to talk to, confirm, who can confirm what I just said, write to me and I will send you a copy of my three-page report, which has already been sent to Harley and others who have been considering this issue. Thank you.
I got somebody...
So my understanding that this will go, you, you're trying to get this petition, then it will be able to vote, so people have plenty of time to research this, where we don't have to be talking about MRF and R. So that the people who vote need to take more responsibility to research this, the data that you give, and that we all have a chance, is, am I understanding that correctly by taking it to this vote?
Yes.
The initiated measure is going to go to a vote of the people, I already know that this is gonna happen. I'm hoping somebody comes down tomorrow and takes out the petition. And then maybe within a week or two, we can get it back, get it verified. Once it's verified, we can set at, at the next council meeting after verification of those signatures, at the next council meeting, we can set an, an election date. And we can have this done before May what? And we can have this done before May what?
Carol Anne has something.
Yes, Carol Anne.
I have a copy here of what he offered to ten people. And if you start by seeing me, or I'll get, I'll put a copy in the star, and then everyone can read it. But the Evans Plunge water right, eighteen ninety, is commercial and recreational. It is a non-consumptive use of water. So, I don't know what he's talking about.
That's not true.
This is what I'm talking about. We're talking about ten topics.
With one telephone call to peer, they have the authority to issue us a water use permit that goes to individual homes without even holding a hearing. And that's what the officials in the state government have told me. Thank you.
We can.
The city already has two water rights from nineteen twenty-five to nineteen fifty. Those are consumptive, so those are there.
These are older, superior rights.
If, if I could make a suggestion. We've got some other items on the agenda tonight. We're not gonna be able to vote on this issue tonight, so, I mean, let's, let's let it lie, let's get petitions going, let's have an election, but let's move on.
I need to move on with my agenda for tonight. Excuse me?
The one that we tabled is what you're asking for?
I think the motion that you tabled opened over again, because we never said the date.
Are you talking about the tabled motion tonight?
Exactly.
The tabled. We did table the motion for purchase, although we didn't say how long. Should I clarify that now with another motion? Okay, so, so now I can make a motion, you tabled a tabled motion until after the election by the public?
Tabled motion, and then you got into the election discussion after you tabled it, so the election is going to govern what happens, because for the election, you're gonna be bound whether you're gonna buy it or not buy it when the election happens, so I think the tabled motion will go away after the election, but I wanna get into terms with you on that.
But if my question is, what about the next, next council meeting? Was this all gonna come back?
No.
Without, without a date.
We may do another tabled motion in another meeting.
Well, that's what I, I'm just trying to. Or should we say, I, we amend that, or should we make it clear that it's tabled until the results of the initiated measure come back? Otherwise, I think it should be brought up every single council meeting. And so, me as a member of the public, ev- every time, we're gonna wonder what's going on. And I just.
I, I think probably we just have to let the matter, um, so we actually, exactly like that, I don't know if we have to hear it or not. But it is not gonna make any difference if it's stamped.
Can we amend the motion at this point in time?
You're the council, you can do what you wanna do. You can amend the motion and, and put some, but you'll have to re, probably re-vote on that, or I would say to re-vote on the tabled motion, you know, setting up some parameters.
Let's re-vote on the, the tabled motion before we get into the rest of the agenda. I made a motion to table it, and we will table it until after the election by the people. There's a, a motion on the table to amend the previous tabling of this purchase of the plunge. Can I have a second?
That clarifies what our position is.
And it will come up again after the election by the public.
That's all I'm trying to get clarified.
Can we now take a roll call vote on that, please?
Grimes?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
No.
Wadeya?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bartolome?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Passes?
Thank you.
I just had an informational question. Once the petitions are filled out, what's the timeframe to an election? I mean, say somebody fills out petitions and brings them back in, you know, a week or two weeks. It, how, then what day is the, is the vote for the, the plunge issue gonna be arranged?
I thought I explained that. After the petitions are brought back to the city and they are verified, and the signatures are verified on the petitions, at the next meeting, that would be in the, the next council meeting after the verification, we will set an election date.
Okay, I didn't know if there was some protocol as to how many days it would be waiting, so.
An initiated measure can, once it's brought, petitions are brought to the city council can, an election can be held at a regular municipal election, or a special election can be set no sooner than thirty days, so all the notice can happen. So it has to be at least thirty days, and it has to be on a Tuesday, and it has to give the timing that we need to get the proper notices or papers for the elections.
You know, I understand a, a lot of people's consternation. Consternation with regard to this. Any of the information that has been gathered, that we have at City Hall with regard to the purchase of the plunge, is there for the public to see. If you wanna go down there and look at what we put together, how we put it together, and what is there, I suggest you do that. But now I have to go on. This never leads to just one question.
Okay, it's going to be an initiative, correct?
Yes.
So they could get a petition and say, "You have, the, the city has to buy the plunge." And so does that take away the bargaining power?
No.
How does that work?
It's the way the, the petition is, is worked, so that we, we, we have no... Harley, how, how was that stated in the, the purchase price or purchase initiative that they put out?
The Healing Waters Group, or members of the Healing Waters Group, has put up earnest money to lock in the, the option or offer for buying the plunge, so it's tied up right now until May first with earnest money under a nonprofit, or I'm not sure who the legal entity is for sure, because the city didn't do it. I wanna make that clear.
No, we did not.
But the purchase agreement is written as such that, and I don't have it right in front of me, but on or before January twenty-second, the board needs to take action based on that tabled motion. If no action is taken by the city council, then it is open until May first, on or before May first, and the intent there by the Healing Waters Group was thinking that there'd be a referendum or some sort of an election, so that's why that date was picked, so it gives the time for an election to occur and move forward. If it's, if the motion, motion or election is to buy the plunge, then that purchase agreement will end up transferring to the city, and then the city begins its negotiation. There is no set dollar amount in the negotiations. What's in there is that, an agreement, if the city takes it over, will have to be made between the owners, talking about the, how they're gonna take possession, when they're gonna take possession, what inventory is gonna transfer, so all of that has to be negotiated. The city has not negotiated any of that at this point. What has to happen, so we don't have another election, and we'll get it to these people, is that there needs to be the bonding authority if the city ends up wanting to bond. We have two banks that wanna do the funding for the city without bonding. So we wouldn't really need the bonding authority in there, but to avoid any hassles and having to have a second election on this thing, if we just vote to buy it, then the next thing will be, oh, we gotta pass a resolution to bond, and then that's referable. So somebody, we might be able to buy it, but then we don't have, the funding is voted down to actually buy it. So that all needs to be in this initiated petition, so all of the answers are in one vote.
And that's one reason why I wanna make sure that all of that information is in the initiative. That they understand that this is gonna take care of the bonding along with, you're not only voting to purchase the plunge, you're, you're voting also to, to authorize the funding.
Who's in writing?
I haven't figured that out yet. At City Hall.
Are you gonna bring it to City Hall?
I think so. At any rate, you know, one of the things that I look, and I'm gonna finalize it with this. I own ten properties in town. I'm working on my tenth house, remodeling it. I look at this as purchasing a property myself. And if I think it's good enough for me, then I negotiate with the owners to buy the property. You don't just buy something blind. You do have people on the council that have looked at the books and records and agreed that the profit is there. We know what the expenses are, and we've overestimated that one. So, I'll leave it at that. Can we now move on to the rest of our agenda? Let's go under old business.
You're true.
We have Iverson and Nolan Olson, Dimick property, and, uh, from the nuisance committee.
I received a call, Mr. Mayor, from the Iversons. She thought the meeting would be on Monday, because it is always on Monday, and they had appointments, so she has requested that she would like to be present to, to discuss any action that you might be taking on her property and ask that she be allowed to come to the next meeting, which would be on a Monday, not on Tuesdays, when she has her appointments. That's her request, the Iverson property.
Well, I think what's, what's, uh, what's come from the nuisance committee, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg. We've said that we're not going to extend any further than what it was from the January one date. So, it's the belief that Helen has ten days to either satisfy the remainder of the order, Helen agrees to allow the city or city's contractor of the property to satisfy the remainder of the order, or the city terminates water and sewer service to the property and issue a notice of, to Black Hills Power to terminate electric service to the property until such time as the order is satisfied. So she's got her choice in any one of the three, but we're not extending this any further. Am I correct? That's what we said in the nuisance committee, and this is what has come out from Scott Seminar's office. We have to get this out of the way. We can't be extending and extending and extending. We told the lady that if she didn't have the property cleaned up by January one, we would proceed with cleaning it up. And then it'll be charged back to the property, either through her water bill or other services, or under taxes, to take care of it, but we can't keep extending and extending and extending. We're just not gonna do it. Now with regard to the Dimick property. Dimick was buying the mobile home and property from Nolan Olson on private contract. Dimick left town, but trashed the mobile home that he was living in and cannibalized it, according to the, to Iverson and Olson's money. And the one next door. Before leaving, the old, older mobile home, tires, rubbish, and miscellaneous garbage remains. If the city has to clean up the property, Olson will be billed for the cost. The committee said that if Olson quit cleaning, deed of the property to the city, the city would clean up the property and not bill Olson. He was called and offered, uh, and that was offered to him. He said he'd get back to me, and that was from Scott Seminar. He didn't get back to him yet, and I, I say again. Olson, Nolan Olson has the same options as, as Helen Iverson. Either get it cleaned up himself, or we're gonna go in and take care of it and bill it to the property. I just, I just don't see these activities going on and on and on and on. We've been dealing with this since January of last year on the nuisance committee. It's gotta stop. We have another property that we now believe should be, uh, have the condemnation on that property removed, and that's the.
Carl Bacher.
Carl Bacher property. He's done everything he can.
Do we need to act on the other two before we act on that one? That's different business.
I don't, I don't know much about acting on it. You know, we already told them what they're gonna do.
So do you have a date that you're gonna do this? What? Do you have a deadline, or?
I, I think Scott's dealing with it, isn't he?
Yeah, he is, and I think you should continue it.
So we don't need to take any action?
No, I think the only action that we're gonna have to do is to pay the contractor when it comes out.
Why would we hire a contractor?
So we're gonna use.
So, so now we, we incur another expense by hiring a contractor.
Who do you wanna, who do you wanna hire? Who do you want to do it?
Well, we have a, we have a street department, I guess.
Do they take care of streets or demolish property?
Well, I don't know. We got them doing every other project, so why not this one? Maybe demolish the property next month.
No, I, I thought that was.
We hired somebody to clean up the, the building.
We trained, we gave them.
Yeah. The city went in and cleaned up the property.
They cleaned it up doing what? Cutting the weeds and hauling the rocks around?
And, and there's some other stuff that the guy needed to clean up that. They don't merit me.
What's the pleasure of the council? What do you wanna do with it?
I make a motion, we contract that cleanup out.
Can we not wait and see how busy the city crews are when the time has to clean it? And if you don't have much going on?
The time to clean it is now.
You wanna clean tomorrow morning, or?
Yeah, I would like to have had it done January second.
Can, can we do Olson's without giving him an opportunity to respond? Because, you know, Dimick was buying it from him, and then Dimick left.
Nolan Olson was, was notified at the same time Dimick was.
By certified letter?
By certified letter.
And, and Scott and I both talked to him, I think. We did talk to him.
So both of the property owners of Dimick have noticed since... When did we start this? In, in June of last year? And we extended to the end of the year for them to get it cleaned up, and they didn't do it.
What's it gonna take for Iverson to get into plan?
Well, there's one trailer house left there that we told her if she got that livable, she could leave it there. And she hasn't been pressed.
So she has to remove the trailer?
Two.
She's removed two.
She's, she's put some effort forward in removing some of the items that were of concern.
So what's it gonna take to please the council? Everything done that we've asked her to do, and that is?
Comply with the orders.
That's wrote down?
That's all written out.
Okay.
Just don't be cleaning up anything you shouldn't be cleaning up, or you'll be buying it.
Pardon me?
I said, "Don't be cleaning up anything you shouldn't be cleaning up, or you'll be buying it."
The entire property is under scrutiny there.
Now, I don't ever remember seeing her complaint, but you said anything. Now, I don't ever remember seeing her complaint, but you said anything about trees and rocks and-
That was the one next door.
Well, I'm just saying, clean it up, nothing that you didn't write her up for.
It's in the write-up.
Good.
We're gonna follow the write-up. I understand where you're coming from.
To the rules. Good.
Do we have a motion on the table?
There's a motion.
Do we have a second to the motion, to go ahead and kind of practice?
Yeah, I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, any comments or questions?
And that's on both properties contracting out there, are we understanding that?
Dimick and Iverson.
Same Dimick, but that's over here.
Right.
I just perceive your contractors built in way more, way more than what the property's gonna be worth.
Well, we have a right to accept or reject any offers on that. I have a motion and a second, and we shall now vote, all those in favor of going forward with this cleanup, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Noted, two noes, and the vote passed.
Now, what are we doing on the Bakker?
Now the Bakker, uh, Mr. Romi, that's your-
Carl and I talked about this, and he's done everything we've asked of him. The only thing that hasn't done is the chimney, and he showed me a receipt where he paid the guy to do it, but it's snow, and the guy won't get one after steep the roof until it dials out to put the new chimney on. He's got the new roof laying there with the contractor, paid to put it on as soon as he put the chimney up, he done for it, everything else is done. So I think we ought to lift the condemnation on it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Do you still have to put the roof off?
They've still got the roof and the chimney, the chimney has to be repaired first. He's already got the contractor do it, but he won't get up on the roof after the snow until it winds up.
As far as I'm concerned, we should just let it lie until, until it's all done, even though he has the parts and everything supplies.
Well, the problem I have with that is, we lifted the condemnation on the city employee's building that isn't done, ain't even close to being done, and Carl's done twice of what that city employee did, and we lifted that.
He hasn't paid a receipt for the roof to be done, doesn't he?
Yeah, and everything's paid.
He, he needs to get that to the building inspector, so that can be made into file, so there's a documentation to back up the, right? In the case of the city employee, the city employee was not served condemnation, a previous homeowner-
But we dropped it so the guy could sell it, and it wasn't done.
And, so condemnation needs to start again, because you have a new owner. Every time you change hands, the process starts all over again.
We should've never lifted it, once we lifted it, it's kinda hard to condemn it again.
Why would we condemn when he's living, they're paying taxes?
Well, I'm definitely saying-
Well, why question it then? Uh, I think-
Do you have a second on that, or no?
No.
I'll second that.
We have a, a motion to lift the condemnation on the Bakker property, and we have a second. We have any more comments or questions? No further comments? Can we have a vote? Everybody in favor of lifting the property condemnation, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
No. I'm against it.
We have three noes. So, we are now gonna lift the condemnation on the property. Ordinances, ordinance number eleven twenty-six, amending chapter four A, animal and foul, first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we adopt this ordinance.
I second. Being a first reading, we can go further right now, can't we? Harley?
Mm-hmm.
Just vote on it?
Yes.
First reading.
What's my county wants to talk about?
Visit with us now, ma'am.
I, I wanted to know about the foul within city limits.
Yes.
Can I keep her?
Keep who? Your chicken?
I taught you on foul.
I recognized your voice.
As it is written right now, yes, you can. Ten passes, but you would be allowed up to six.
But no roosters.
Oh, no. As it stands right now, this is the pass.
We have, we're gonna kill that little rooster. We can die. This mo, this thing was tabled in the last meeting.
But there is a copy of it here, if you would like to have it.
This is a whole new ordinance from the one that was tabled, so, but we have sitting out there, and I suppose we need to get some part of entry procedure figured out, but-
Mr. Luck's is gone.
Mr. Luck didn't send it out to the city administrator and started the meeting.
Right. So, since this is now-
This is a brand-new-
A brand-new animal and, animal and foul ordinance, not part of what was tabled the last meeting, is now a first reading again. And we have a motion to proceed, and we have a second, and I would like to have any further comments or questions? I answered your question, you can keep your chick.
Well, only if the next reading passes.
I've been trying to get her done for about six months, so we'll see here.
Everybody in favor of this, this ordinance?
It's gotta be roll call.
Does it? Ordinance or resolution?
We'll do her. Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Wina?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bartolome?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
One hundred percent, that's good, you keep your chick. Until the next reading, of course.
I know.
And do we have to set a hearing on that?
Uh, it'll be automatic at the next council meeting.
Okay.
When is that?
Uh, February, first Monday, and February fourth, February fourth.
Going on, ordinance number eleven twenty-seven, amending chapter twenty-four A, traffic ordinance, first reading.
Any motion we adopt it?
I will second that.
I have a motion to adopt, and a second, any questions or comments?
Uh, we might mention that there's some snow removal, uh, sections within this ordinance that have been added, uh, based on comments from the last storm that we had, mainly, but it's something that's not ever been in the ordinance before, emergency snow rounds.
And we do have copies of this at City Hall for people to come and get if they want a copy.
That is correct.
Okay.
Is, is, is that anything to do with the parking?
Yes.
The two-hour parking?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that isn't very-
What's going on with that?
You don't have that problem, maybe.
Oh, we don't?
No, you don't.
The, the two-hour parking that was in the ordinances for everything from Minnetka all the way through River Street, over to the post office, across in front of the post office, down to Robbs, around the corner from Robbs, uh, onto University, if I got my streets right, uh, was all two-hour parking. Uh, we now, in this ordinance, will allow thirty-minute parking in front of the post office, and that's the only time limit parking that there will be in the traffic ordinance.
All the rest of it has been lifted.
The thirty-minute parking will be posted, no, there will, there's no two-hour parking anymore.
The only time limit you have for parking in the community, you have thirty minutes in front of the immediate parking stalls.
And that's provided if pass a second reading, you know, two weeks from now.
So we have a motion and a second, shall we now vote by the roll call? Harley?
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Wina?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bartolome?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Enamnis, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I got bingo tonight.
Resolutions.
I, I think one or two of the council people have some additions to discuss on this resolution, but at the last meeting you had voted to pay off the MRF bonds early, and as part of that, the three dollars and sixty cents that was part of the debt service on the monthly billing needed to go away. Uh, the council has reviewed and looked at the funding that's been coming in, and there hasn't been as much of a need for maintenance on the containers as what had been estimated previously, so this resolution is taking a total of four dollars and fifty cents off of the monthly garbage bill that was under the section on your bill that said debt, city fee. If the debt part goes away, four dollars and fifty cents comes off, three sixty of that is what the debt really was, so you're gaining a little more as a resident, and it now will only be called a city fee, because there's no debt there anymore for the monthly billing for the city portion. So you have a garbage fee that goes to Kiefer for the collection, you have a city fee for the maintenance of the cans and any future replacement, and there is some question by a council person or two if, if four dollars and fifty cents monthly for all of the residents is still too much for-
When, when I brought this up to pay the MRF off, my intent was get paid off, save the interest, and get some of this money off the people's backs, I still kinda feel that, that four dollars and fifty cents a month is, is too much, because you do the math, and that's almost, well, seventy thousand a year, and we're still gonna be taking it. There's no, there's no reason for us to be collecting that money every month for no reason, other than just to collect. I understand we're gonna, we're gonna earmark some of that money for the cleanup, and the keep Hot Springs beautiful, and-
Garbage can repair.
And the garbage can repair, but we still, we're gonna have more than enough money to accomplish all that. I mean, I, I just, I feel it, we're collecting that money for no need, we should be giving that money back to residents.
Well, that's why at the meeting that I was at, uh, they wanted to just do the three sixty-one?
No, we really-
Three sixty-eight?
We didn't really get to talk to it about, or we didn't talk about it that much, and I, I didn't have much time to think about it then, that's why I thought about it all weekend long, but, that's, those are the reasons I want to pay it off, is to get this monkey off everybody's back, and I mean, we're achieving part of it, we need to go further.
So where do you, where do you want it to stay at?
I, I don't know, I, I think we need to-
I'd like to wait one or two months to see how much it's gonna cost us if we do the cleanup days, to see, we'll have a pretty good idea of what that'll cost.
Do we want to wait then and not, not move on this resolution?
No, I say the four-fifteen now.
Huh?
The place dropped to four-fifteen, then basically all refilled in a couple months.
And then we look at it in a couple months to make sure we got enough money.
So, is somebody gonna make that motion?
Somebody. Second.
No further comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll read this of this in a couple of months.
We've got a hundred dollars left over already, and then we spent five thousand last year.
Personnel, you can see that in your agenda, I'm not gonna go into that. Uh, Fall River County accepted the low dip from Nelson Oil and Gas for eight thousand gallons of unleaded gasoline at two forty-eight per gallon. City cleanup, Public Works under new business.
Uh, this is going through Public Works, uh, if I agree with that, it's for itself, if anybody has any questions about it, we're gonna do two cleanup days, or six cleanup days a year, one week every two months, at the MRF. Citizens and businesses of Hot Springs may dispose of up to two pickup loads or pickup-sized trailers of rubble, hard metal, the Hot Springs MRF, or the current stamp paid water bill. A pickup trailer will be considered two loads. Contractors are not eligible for this service unless they live in the city limits and are cleaning their own properties. Dump trucks and large commercial vehicles are not eligible for this service. Absolutely no household garbage will be taken. IEDs shall be shown for each water bill to ensure that this service is for the citizens of Hot Springs municipality. Metal products shall be separated in different containers. All cleanup material being received shall be indoors at the MRF facility. Cleanup days shall run one full week or normal business hours. One city employee shall be on duty and oversee unloading to ensure quality, safety, and to assist senior citizens or handicapped citizens in unloading material. For citizens who rent in Hot Springs and do not pay a water bill, who have all, are, who have all their utilities included in their rent, a form at City Hall will be available to verify residence. Residents can be verified by any current utility bill or cell phone bill with a correct address. After residence is verified, two passes will be given to these residents. Items accepted will be at the discretion of the city of Hot Springs. For citizens who are limited mobility or with no means to haul material, the city has the option of helping these individuals with city pickups, dump trucks, and loaders to clean up property. Some of the items not accepted are tires, ordinary household garbage, appliances with freon, unless the appliance has been properly drained of freon and tagged by business license to perform freon removal. Paint or any chemicals or containers used to store chemicals will not be accepted, and car batteries will be taken but must be separated from all other material. The city of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs City Council would like to encourage all citizens to help keep Hot Springs beautiful and plain, and I will make the motion that we accept that.
I have a second. So I have a motion to accept the, the city of Hot Springs cleanup days, uh, as projected by Mr. Wina, and I have a second on it. Are there any further comments or questions?
Do we have a total dollar amount we're willing to throw at this?
You have in the budget, six thousand dollars for cleanup is what you budgeted for twenty thirteen.
Is that with keep Hot Springs beautiful, or is that just for this?
That's just for this, you have an additional three thousand dollars for keep Hot Springs beautiful.
So in that fund that would just keep growing, then, then that's not even going into this?
That is right now.
So you've got a hundred thousand basically set there, and then you're gonna extract another seventy thousand this year. But if we budget the money, if we budget, say, twenty-five thousand, you still got a lot of money set there.
What are you gonna do about the brush pile?
Burn it.
I don't know, that, that, that's, that's, that could very well cost us some money, I guess, you're right.
We did get permission to burn a bear horn.
You're gonna have to haul it out there, I mean, a lot of cost there.
Sarah?
What are we gonna do about no landfill in this area?
Talk to the mayor. You should've done something years ago.
I know, but he ain't here to talk to it anymore.
Well, you should've been proactive back then, Eldon.
Hundred dollars a ton out here, but this one, edge one is fifty, but you got gas to get there, and-
Plus the scale fees.
Yeah, and you can find a lot of stuff laying in the fence lines and everything else, because people ain't all or nothing.
Are you talking about household garbage?
No.
Eldon, that's why-
That, that's why we're-
That's why we're doing this.
We discussed this program, this cleanup program.
Yeah.
Because we see it happening already.
So there'll be six cleanup days a year, right?
About six cleanup weeks.
Weeks, weeks.
But sure, county residents, we're probably not gonna be able-
But sure, county residents, you're probably not going to be eligible for this.
Well, you're a business in town, there's a water bill, so you would be eligible.
You'd have to have show that he's a resident of the city.
Our business is essential.
Our business is essential.
You still have a business here in town, Eldon? You still have a business here in town?
Yeah. That all qualifies.
It does.
It does.
It's specified in there. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I have another question.
Another question? Yes, ma'am?
My brother died last January, and his wife went back to Oregon. Now, I turned over the keys to somebody down at City Hall. And they were going to do cleanup or something that she's not used to, you know? And as far as I know, they sent her letters and stuff to clean it up. It's over on Sherman, by Crossman and Udrop Inn, that corner there. And that's becoming real eyesore. There's limbs down in the valley. I think the trees were trimmed that belonged to the city.
What is the person's name that owns the property?
It was Woolbridge.
It was?
Didn't that go back to the bank?
Supposedly, but they told me that I had to turn the keys over to the city because somebody had to take care of maintenance on the property, and she wouldn't.
Well, the bank would have to do that.
They won't talk to anybody.
Well, that's their responsibility.
I know, but the neighbor tried to buy it, you know?
Yeah.
You can't get a hold of them.
Yeah, I know. I gave him all the information. I called her. But it's really pretty ugly coming in now.
How much money does the bank hold a mortgage on it?
Thirty-nine thousand.
And I would think that they would want to protect their thirty-nine thousand and get the property cleaned up. Otherwise, we can go after them if you, if somebody wants to make complaint with regard to that property for the committee, the nuisance committee. But it shouldn't be the city's responsibility when somebody owns a loan against it.
Why did they say I had to give them the keys?
I don't know who told you that. The bank?
No, City Hall's key.
City Hall told you?
Yes.
The building inspector?
Probably.
Sure, you guys do clean, right?
We'll track that down and find out.
Okay. The City Hall has a key, and I know who the key is. I called them several times, and Mr. Butler called them several times, and Sammy, who I think may have the property, was like, it's city, you're a bank.
Okay. All right. We'll look into that.
Carl, just one more thing on this. This is a new program, and we reserve the right to make some changes if we have to. We might not run this smooth as law.
But we're going to try it.
You know, there's a possibility, if, I know of one time last year, the county landfill, our landfill took free tires. If we can coordinate that, we'll have one of the weeks where we'll take tires so we can get rid of them for free in the landfill.
Edgemont's still got money there.
There might be some changes made as we go along here, guys. I think it'll be a good deal to help clean up the town.
It's not written in stone then, but we're going to vote on it.
Good job.
Should we, should we have a vote now? All questions, comments over? Anybody, everyone in favor of passing this cleanup days? Vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes and aye mean the same thing. Any opposed? Issue passes. Okay, we have another item under Public Works, RFP, Johnson Control.
Carl, you want to take that one? Okay, this Johnson Control, come and did a big study for, did studies that we, they save you enough money supposedly when you do the project, they guarantee they save you enough money to make the payment and that's it.
If you prove they don't...
Yeah, if you, and there's some questions on that. And he come, showed up for Public Works meeting and made another sales pitch to us, and we're going to take the next step that does not require any commitment from the city.
That's no cost.
No cost. And just pursue it a little bit farther and see if it gets us anywhere.
Two of the fourteen projects that they proposed are what the Public Works group are looking at, doing a request for proposal file. And those being the heating system here at the Bueller Center and the radio read water meters.
Where our police department can read meters as they drive by up into the street?
So are we going to make a motion that we go forward with the next section with Johnson Control?
We need to bring back the information.
You need to publish an RFP, and then that, that information comes to the council for acceptance or denial of the finding.
So what do we have to do with it right now? Just notice to the public?
Authorize a notice to be published for the RFP.
Do we have to vote on that? Let's vote on it then. Do we have a motion to publish? Or you have a second? You got a first, an accepted motion, and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, now we're down to committee reports.
Oh, you got one item. Accepted the CDVG grant. I was approached by Black Hills Council local governments who was overseeing a community development block grant that was done on behalf of Fall River Health Services some years ago. They're in the process of closing that grant out, and there's a motion in your package that should be made to start that process or be part of the finalization, finalization and the closeout of that CDVG grant.
Does this cost the city any money?
Cheryl, you might help me out on the, the Fall River Health Services Community Development Block Grant, we're in the closeout process. There's no additional cost because the administration was all done through Black Hills Council local governments, and they knew that as part of their services, you know, on behalf of the community of Hot Springs.
Okay. All right. So I make the motion that the City of Hot Springs Council accepts the CDVG number zero seven zero eight dash one one four for the Fall River Health Services hospital project is satisfactorily complete. I have a motion.
Second, ma'am.
A second. I have a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Having no questions or comments? You'll vote? All, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Thank you. There's abstention, Georgia. Committee reports. Georgia, would you report on administration of the government?
We've had some review of some of the salaries for the library personnel, and we decided that we would do some more work on their job descriptions. We felt they were a little low, and that we would write a schedule that would work for that a little bit better. So no reaction really, it's all postponed. Then we had some that were scheduled, they're not really on a schedule, they haven't had any raises for three years, and some ones since 2011. And I think we addressed those, one of them today. Anyway, we were trying to figure a way that would work a little bit easier. We did have some discussion about doing the cost of living increase, and the library personnel had commented that they would prefer everybody get it than them, just them getting their raises, but I think that will probably be something that we'll work on because it wasn't in our budget for this year, and it came to be about thirty-six thousand dollars.
So we'll be looking at that further as budget type.
Right. We did discuss the plunge a little bit, and we also discussed some of the safety issues because the librarians did do work on the safety committee, and they brought in twelve thousand dollars that they saved on a grant, I believe. Yeah, I think that's what they call it. And then a savings on six thousand dollars on our liability. So in all, they brought in probably a savings to the city of about eighteen thousand dollars. We have a certified public director that Cindy does. We would like to get a certified public director starting a committee, we're setting that up, safety committee, so we could do this each year and start working on that. So if we can get accredited through the state, it takes four years for special training, and I think that could be something we need to look at.
So anything that can help us save some money and make some money would be good. Public Works, Mr. Winia.
The city cleanup, which we just went over. We're also going to be looking at the water ordinance here in the next few meetings. Possibly increasing the deposit fees to recoup some costs from non-payment bills. We're getting a huge stack of bills, and we're not getting good information on these people. So we've got no way to put them on a collection agency or go after them, and it's becoming quite an issue. So we need to look at that, see if we can run this thing more like a business or whatever, so we can collect some of our bad debt. And we got some good compliments on the concrete grinding we did on the Freedom Trail in town, so it's nice to hear that some people appreciate what we're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Garone, public safety, please.
Well, I had a meeting, or we did, but when I changed open books, I left my notes in there.
So we'll pick you up at the next meeting.
Okay. Basically, what we've been working on for the last two, two weeks pretty much is the animal ordinance and then our snow removal and traffic licenses. Those are pretty much considered most important. And we will be starting next week on our bicycle ordinance and safety measure.
That's good. Cultural and recreation, Mr. Bartolome.
Yes, we was talking about having the SDSU come down, and I believe it's going to be in May to evaluate our park system. And so that's still on hold. We've had quite a few, quite a few things at the library happening, we're having quite a few classes at the library, if anybody's interested in it. They're having math classes, email classes, chess classes, board, board reading classes in April. And then I have one, one other thing that, that we have, there's a couple of people in this town that want to donate property to make another park. This is between Hager's, Indianapolis, and Joplin Avenue. It's on the, it's on the river, and these people are willing to donate the property on the river if the city will take the property and make a park out of it. So that's just, that's still up in, depends on whether we want to make the river that a park down it. And the only thing we have to do is just maintain it. And the property is going to be just donated to the city.
So everybody understands that would be behind the soup, or the...
Hotel Six.
On both sides of the river.
On this one side.
Oh, it's on both sides. I got Hotel Six, on the Hotel Six side, our Woolbridge, okay? This is how it's, it's happening. You know that park, I mean, that street that was closed?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street. If we open that street back up and make it a street and pave it, he will donate that part from that street all the way to the river. If we do not want to mess with the street, from the edge of the curb, he will donate from that street, from the edge of the curb to the river, he will donate.
But half the park's going to have to be named for the donor? Is that correct?
No, nowhere's in any of these dealings that I've done with, did the park have to be named to anybody. Maybe we'll make it for the city council. Put all of our names on it. So I want everybody to just think about that, if we want to make that, make that a park. And then we're also talking about a wellness trail to help people walk, you know, make that freedom trail, park this, add it on to this park that we're making so they'll walk next to the river.
Yeah, and I think they were talking about putting stations, I think some size stations.
I got a question earlier about that. How do we de-vente it? You said that that can't be done.
If you reopen a street, you'll have to, it'll become part of the deed transfer for the, for the land.
So we could do that with alleys that's been closed too?
Well, if adjoining property owners want to do that. And that's what you have in this case, is the adjoining property owners willing to.
Right, but he also indicated when we're talking about the street now, he still wants to have, be able for the trucks to use that part of that street for parking, and say, not necessarily parking on the street, but being able for the trucks to come in, degress and degress, so that they could park on that dirt. And then when we're looking at this, at this property, if we get the street, we could put parking, you know, like they could park along that curbside, and we would not have to infringe on Hotel Six's property because they do not want people to park in their parking lot as going to the park due to liability. So if we own that park, I mean, that alleyway, alleyway street, whatever it's going to be, if we own it, we could use that as also as parking so that we would not have to park in Motel Six's parking lot.
So would we be able to fence that property off to alleviate?
He, okay, this is part of the, then you would prefer not to have it fenced off due to the fact that one of the people that would come to his establishment be able to park their vehicle in Motel Six's parking lot and be able to... their vehicle in Motel Six's parking lot and be able to go to the park and do fishing or whatever that kids wanna do.
Do we have, do we have to put water in this park? Or is there water there, not in the street?
No, there is, there is no, there is no water fountain there.
Fountain, just water, so they can water it and stuff like that?
Are there any utilities adjacent to the property?
There used to be, because it used to be a trailer park on one side. There are steel cement slabs...
That, that's on the west side of the river.
Right, on the west side of the river. There are still cement slabs there, which are in not really bad shape, which we could put picnic tables on there, you know, for handicapped people to be able to use it.
We also deem it as a natural growth park. We wouldn't have to actually have water.
Ground? Or do you have anything, anything further? Mr. Lux?
Meeting's gone too long already, I'm done.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn the meeting by whom? Citizen Anzley. All in favor, leave.